Thank you. This evening, we have initially a presentation regarding the Xerox Roadway project by Matt Chaffield. So I guess at this particular point, I will turn this over to Matt and he can discuss the project a little bit further.
Great. Well, thank you, Daryl. Hopefully everybody can hear me.
I guess.
What I'd like to do is refresh and replace memory about the award of funding for Empire State Development and then talk about the next steps in the part, the COVID emergency and some general economic issues dealing with and some business matters related to Xerox has kind of helped us start up this project to really take shape. But I think at this point, we are ready to continue to make progress with this initiative in hopes that we can stay off the state actually pulling the funding back from us should they not be happy with our progress. I have not been given any indication that they're willing to do that, but it's always good to make sure that we're moving forward and we're getting organized as we speak. So as you remember, hopefully you all have in front of you a series of documents that we handed out. The first document would be the award letter from Empire State Development. This is dated December of 2019. We were awarded $1.838 million towards the ultimate engineering, design, environmental work and the rehabilitation. And then following that, the transfer of certain roadways from the Xerox campus to Village. The transfer would not take place until the roads are rehabilitated. The funding that we have applied for and have been awarded is only a portion of the overall project. And the overall project budget, which is in the following pages, is roughly $9.2 million. And we have been awarded $1.8 million of that effort in New York State funds. We have about 20% of our funding awarded. Right down here, you can see we have about 20% of our funding awarded currently. And that should be sufficient for us to conduct engineering, right away mapping, and potentially some construction as well. So the hope is to begin this project once we have entered into some negotiations with Xerox Corporation regarding their participation in the project. As you can see down here, there's a private contribution of roughly $527,000. So the order of bank is about a half a million dollars. And that would be a delta that would need to be made up by Xerox and/or a future owner. So at this time, we do not foresee any funds coming from Village or Webster taxpayers or town of Webster taxpayers. The goal is for this to be funded either through state and federal and private efforts. So where we stand today is the village has been awarded, essentially, they've been promised a seat at the table, let's put it that way. There's multiple steps that we need to undertake from this point forward. And the first of which, and I'm sorry, I keep scrolling through here, but the first of which is we need to provide them with a project budget and an overall, basically, a final project proposal. We have not done that yet for a few reasons. Because we wanted to stay off the project a little bit and we also needed to make sure that we had sufficient buy-in from Xerox. At this time, they are interested, but we don't have a firm commitment from them as of yet for a specific dollar figure that is part of our next steps. So the overall goal is we submit this project budget, the state, New York State, Empire State Development would then approve that. And then that is the basis for which we move forward. So we don't want to submit a project proposal that's finalized until we feel very comfortable with it. Because we will be held to that. There won't be any changing. That will be very difficult. And then the remainder to the Village in a future date is all based on the first initial proposal that we provided. So, okay. So I'm gonna pause right now and see if there's any questions.
Do you have any idea on the answer from Xerox? Any kind of timeframe, anything? I know it's been difficult.
And right, I believe the ball is in our court. I spoke with the director of facilities for Northern Hemisphere and their director of real estate. I spoke with them in early May. And they have seemed very interested in continuing the dialogue. They were thrilled that the village had secured funding. They were curious as to the next steps as well as what we were asking of them. And at that time, I didn't ask them for money. I was not interested in starting that conversation on the very first discussion. But I think we're at a point now where we need to be able to provide them with what we see as the project next steps, like a schedule and then the budget and then where they come into play as far as participation. I think that's really the next steps with Xerox.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, it was really good. Thanks.
So that's unfortunate.
Now, if these roads then become the property of the Village of Webster?
Yes. The proposal, the proposal is for the following roads, Mitchell Dean, San Jose, Orchard and Panama. That's the proposal is for those roads to be transferred into the public domain. Yes.
Thank you. Which then would open up the possibility for other distribution or breaking up of the Xerox campus, right?
Correct. Daryl, the real main driver behind doing this is the campus is 770 acres. All of those buildings, many of them vacant, do not infringe on any sort of public road. And the developers and investors that we've spoken with in the past have expressed interest in the buildings themselves, but they've had a lot of questions about how a lot of this infrastructure and then access easements would take place. And for example, Mitchell Dean Drive is a private road, has about, you know, $2 million's worth. They have buildings fronting directly on it. So we would, and most of them are vacant. So Xerox would be able to divest those one at a time. And they would still maintain access to a public street. And then, of course, you know, anybody who's gonna buy the building is gonna put it to immediate use. They're not gonna buy a building and then let it sit vacant. So.
Very good. Very good. Yeah, I'm happy with that. Dave, you may ask your question.
Okay, so in addition to, you know, providing that overview of the project, part of the next steps are to really move this, even move this project forward. And in order to do that, we believe, at least it's, we as, I believe, is that you need to have one, basically one team member, you know, for the village to help do that. And have somebody that would be able to provide, you know, a significant amount of time and expertise to getting the project at least started and moving forward. So we have made a proposal to the village to act as essentially a project coordinator. And that would include several tasks, which don't have to be, all of which don't have to be mutually exclusive to one another. It could be an all-in-one situation where the village is looking for project startup assistance, coordinating with Empire State Development and Xerox, helping with the consultant selection process if you're gonna require extreme, I would say, professional, you know, transportation consulting experience. And I've, you know, we've helped the village in the past with this for the North Avenue project. So helping with that process, helping form an advisory committee of people that will help guide the project and provide that guidance to the village. And at least some initial startup grant administration. And then that effort, you know, could continue on through the remainder of the project. If the village wanted to have sort of like its own in-house, you know, project management team, then it could also have a team that would help with the public engagement component, which there will be several public meetings throughout the duration of this project. So this is an effort that's, would be an hourly, not to exceed the hourly rate that we bill for my time is $125 an hour. And then these fees would be paid out of the grant proceeds. So they would not necessarily come directly out of village coffers. They would be similar to when you would pay your engineering consultant instead of paying, let's say, a LaBella or Martin Judas for some of these services. You know, we, it would be the initial consultant to help get the project up and running. So the goal was to at least present, you know, this proposal this evening, you know, ask pretty questions. And then if the village board decided to, it would be able to take up any sort of action if it chose to at July 23rd.
Okay.
You know, I'd like to field questions, if any, regarding the proposal.
Okay. If they have questions as well.
Matt, would you act as a coordinator or primarily liaison regarding this project? Would we?
Uh, yes, I mean, I would be the, I would be, I would be the staff person. You know, we would not hire an additional staff person for this. It would be my time towards this effort, building upon the experience and the organization that we have conducted to be to move this project forward, basically from its inception to where we are now.
Could you clarify a little? I'm trying to solidify in my head the timeline. You would need some of the, some of the time estimates that you mentioned just to put the proposal together. Is that right? So what happens if we don't get that $1.8 million if the project doesn't go, correct?
Correct. Correct. And we would, obviously, the initial steps would be, right now, to write off the bat, to apply time, to apply effort towards the initial project proposal to Empire State Development. And then, of course, to ensure that Xerox would be on board and would provide essentially its participation. Because without Xerox's participation, our project doesn't move forward. And none of the other work would be conducted, none of the consultation, the consultant selection, none of the rest of it would happen. So really, the next true steps are securing that commitment from Xerox, because without that, the project would be dead in the water. And at this point, you know, I'm gonna be honest, if that takes, you know, 20 hours or, you know, so of time, you know, to get to that point, and the project falls flat on its face, the Alliance isn't gonna build the village for that time. You know, it's just, that becomes, that just becomes, you know, essentially, that time is, would then be thought of as time that's traditionally part of what I would override the village via my normal staff requirements of the Alliance itself. A bit of a lot of effort for what we're looking at, what really needs to be accomplished and conducted here is beyond what would be normally provided to the town, the village, the municipal district, the chamber for any single initiative. Because it's very specific toward one member of the Alliance itself. And the board is, you know, of the impression, you know, of the belief that they're fine with the staff time being devoted to that. But there needs to be a, you know, essentially, a consult agreement in place.
That makes sense. And so, is there, is there any circumstance or situation where the village would find its holes with costs that it has to cover that we weren't anticipating?
Not that I, not that I can foresee currently. I mean, as far as costs to WEA itself, I do not foresee any, any costs. The goal, if it's an agreement, part of the agreement would be that for, you know, Xerox, or whoever the private would be, but Xerox to provide this chunk of money, and that money would have to come upfront, right? There would have to be a large chunk of that money, basically, the majority of that money would need to be provided to the village at the outset of the project, or very, very early in the project, such that the village could pay and pay invoices from its consultants from that pot of money. And then after those invoices have been paid, then turn around and request reimbursement for those, for those invoices from state. And then that'd be large tranches of money, probably, you know, probably almost half a million dollars at a time, depending on how, depending on how the appetite for Empire State Development to give us multiple draws. Typically, they wanna see one draw. They wanna see, you know, okay, the project's fully completed. Now we'll, you know, what we need to do is, and that's part of the next steps, is we need to go to negotiate with them and say, we need a minimum of two draws. Because there's gonna be a lot of work conducted upfront. And then, obviously, once construction, you know, there's gonna be a lot of work upfront, there's gonna be a lot of engineering upfront, there's gonna be significant costs. The village will likely have to, during construction at least, you know, the village will likely end up having to borrow short term, and pull from those, pull from that van, you know, and then get reimbursed at the end from Empire State Development if the project is closed out. So, Marshall, there is quite a bit of coordination with your chair that needs to happen regarding how this really works out.
Okay. So then really, if we can't get that half million private funding by October, if Xerox doesn't wanna participate, then the water, our-
Not that the project's, that the project's dead. I mean, the village is not in the business of just taking over Xerox's roads on its own recourse. You know, this is an incentive to them.
Thank you. That's why I asked the first question. How is Xerox doing?
I mean, based on, you know, their cost to maintain this roadway system is pretty extensive. And they also know that the cost to redevelop and rehabilitate the roads is quite extensive as well. And if they did that, could be on the hook for that. That would be of benefit to them in the end. You know, pursuing this project would also make the sale and redevelopment of all our options.
Yeah. It just makes it look better, you know. Yeah, I, I don't know what you're saying. Yeah, let's try and do some-
They're not saying at all. They just want more information.
All right.
And Matt, has, have any estimates or projections been done about the potential future cost to the village of maintaining those roads versus the tax income from that area?
So at the, I don't have that information at my fingertips, but during the grant application process, I did meet with Jake and we extensively discussed, you know, currently, there's X number of lane miles. And I think Jake may be able to chime in. And he may recall that we did an analysis of how many lane miles and what their current budget was. And then, you know, obviously, this would be, you know, on a per lane mile basis, this would be a percentage increase thereof. So we did do some back-of-the-napkin estimates. And I think we could probably provide the board with some more detailed information. Based on if I remember, it wasn't substantial at all. I mean, it's, it's, I would say, it's not negligible. It's not negligible, but the hope is that, well, essentially, it becomes that, that economic, it's an economic development cost that the village is taking on to spur investment in redevelopment. Great question, Marshall. It's a great, it's a great question. Jake, did you have any, is Jake there? Jake, are you there, sir? Can you hear me? I can hear you now.
Okay, yeah, we, I do recall the conversation and the meeting going over all the numbers. I don't have them at my fingertips right now, but, you know, I know we can certainly take those back up and provide them.
Yeah. Be nice to speak. If you remember.
Oh, absolutely. And we do have those, we did provide that, actually, that analysis we provided to the village board probably a year ago. And we did provide it as part of our grant application to the state government. So we can, we will, I will review that and we can provide that, maybe some updated figures, maybe, you know, based on 2020, 21 budget for the highway department. We have probably come up with some pretty decent figures for those particular budget categories.
Okay. And how, how are, how would we estimate the recent village revenues then?
Well, that's actually gonna require, that's a good question. Now, what we have done as part of the application, and part of the grant application, we did make some estimates of what we thought the development potential was for either reactivation of vacant buildings or development on a new construction basis. And it was more like over the period of a 10-year period. That's something that is gonna be in Spain. As far as new construction is concerned, we can make some broad estimates. We can ask the assessor, we can ask Donna Kober's office, you know, to provide us with some background information. But as far as a full cost benefit analysis, that's not something that we've conducted to date.
And I get there are too many variables to really nail anything down.
There's a lot of variables. I mean, obviously, you know, our hope is that even if we, even if this doesn't spur a significant amount of new development on the Xerox campus itself, if it spurs, you know, job, you know, job activity, you know, investment activity at the building level, they're willing to be a spin-off benefit. There's a multiplier benefit for, you know, new jobs and new investment that flows into the economy. But, you know, as far as, you know, us being able to really estimate that, it becomes very much a collegiate exercise, you know, a man-o'-man antics exercise. And we would make a lot of broad assumptions that very well may pan out or may not. So, there's no question, Marshall, there's, there is some sense of risk, right? I mean, obviously, if the village takes on this responsibility for, you know, new roads, you know, is that really gonna spur anything? And the hope is that, you know, based on all the other infrastructure that's in place and the economic opportunity and the fact that this is also in a federal opportunity zone, which is a, there's a special tax incentive program for this area, which would be even more enticing for investment.
It could be, it could also be a challenge with, if there's a new normal with COVID. So there's a lot of, a lot of huge companies, Matt, that are going the other way and are gonna get rid of some bricks and mortar and do more mobile workforce and stuff. So it could be interesting.
Yep. Correct. I mean, I don't think, I don't think we have a real good thumb on what the crystal, you know, on that crystal ball. I will say this, though, that if, if the village can secure state, federal funds to cover, you know, and private funding to cover 100% of the rehabilitation and basically redevelopment of these roads into, you know, a new, you know, industrial scale or business park, you know, parkway tree line, sidewalks and streetlights.
Yeah.
The, there's, the overall maintenance or something that's brand new, and Jake will probably be able to create, the overall maintenance or something that's brand new, at least is a little less, you know, in those first five, even 10 years, maybe some crack filling and, you know, maybe some sealing of brand new roads. You're gonna have a bit of land, you're gonna have a bit of roadway ahead of you, time perspective, before there's any funding that the village would need to put into serious rehabilitation. So time would be on your side to let the economy and the market kind of respond.
Agreed. I think that, anytime you make an investment, there's a certain level of risk. But doing nothing, there's, we kind of know that risk is a little more easy to identify. If there's buildings that are sitting down there without access to public roads, they don't, they stay empty for a while. This is kind of what, you know, if you build it, they will come kind of approach, I think, that makes a lot of sense and very little risk in the totality of the budget. Very little risk to the village or alley to the village. You know, if our alley, you know, with the, may I even place, our alley comes on the, on the backside of it. Correct.
Yep. Yep. But these are all very good. I mean, this is, these are the exact questions that should be asked. And this is, you know, the very things that the village board should be pondering. You know, it's, it's correct. It's not a home run. It's not a no-brainer. But it's likely a better alternative than doing nothing. Or, and I could say likely, and I could say it's definitely a better alternative than doing nothing, which would allow things to fall into complete disrepair. And then have the current occupant walk away and we're left, we're left with a complete elotrope on our hands.
This would be an incentive.
I think it helps the village. It provides an opportunity for the village to determine a little before the course of the future, right? If we're gonna take dedication to this, we're gonna, you know, and this, from that point, from a land use perspective, then it really allows you to, you know, make some more broader land use changes in the future should you, you know, should you decide to modify zoning and create new districts or alter existing districts. You know, having that hard edge of a roadway and be able to say, okay, south of this is X, and west of this is Y, and, you know, to the north of Mitchell Dean, we're gonna do Z. It really would allow the village that flexibility to determine the future of the area. future of the area.
Man, I have, uh, I've had those letters, uh, that you were interested in, um, put on, letterhead from the village, so, uh, wait and see, um, I guess, uh, the next, uh, in terms of moving forward with this, um, proposal. But, um, I'm ready to go with those letters, that we start that, uh, committee, uh, working.
Right, yeah, I think, I think it's gonna get an evaluated committee established, getting those people, and, you know, that experience around the table, um, they can, they can ask, uh, ask the proper questions, that we can find the answers to those questions, uh, to ensure that the village is, is truly moving forward, um, in a way that protects itself, and in a way that obviously maximizes the funding that's been provided to us today.
Hey, hey, Matt, were you, uh, were you gonna have any type of more formal retainer agreement or something, other than this July one letter?
We can, uh, provide that, and, um, if that's, if you would like to see something a little bit more formal, I didn't know if you would, if you wanted to provide something, then, uh, if you would, if you would prefer us to provide.
Well, I, I would, I would ask you to provide and secure the funds, you know, you're the one being hired, but,
Sure.
And, you know, just for example, you, you know, you say suggested fee structure, well, suggested, that doesn't mean, well, I don't, you know, you used the phrase, the word suggested, so, does that mean that isn't what the fee structure is, or you're only suggesting it? And the village could pick another one, you know, and so, I think you need something a little more set in stone, and, and the other thing is, since obviously the village hasn't budgeted for any of this, this sort of goes along with what Marsha said, and your statement that the upfront costs are hopefully gonna get paid by the money to be gotten from the landowner, i.e. Xerox. Would you consider making your fee, you know, contingent upon receipt of that private money? In other words,
Yes.
Until, until you get a commitment from Xerox that they're gonna kick in money, what you do up to that point is just ordinary WEDA work that you would, you're doing is just part of your normal job. But then, once you secure the money, if the money gets secured, then pretty much, you know, this project could move forward, and at that point, I think it would be reasonable for you to get your hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour, you know, going forward.
Correct. Yep, and I, I, I agree with that approach. In my, uh, I don't see any, um, pushback from my board on that approach. I mean, if, if the project doesn't move forward, um, you know, this isn't, this isn't really, this isn't really, uh, an, uh, the, 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 trying to take advantage of, of the situation.
Oh, no, I, no, I understand.
We, we need this, we need this project to move forward as, uh, as a community.
No, I understa, I, I, I understand that.
Critical getting that done.
I understand that, so why not, what, so then, why don't you just do a, um, just, it can be just a short letter, and, and, and say that, um, you know, that you're, that, that, you know, contingent upon receiving the approximately five hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, or however you wanna phrase it, in private money, the village will, um, you know, pay you at a hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour for whatever time you put into, under those tasks, one, two, and three. And then, that way, the board, then, then, then you'll have a signature line, you know, in there for the mayor to accept it, and the board will have to take a resolution to, you know, authorize the mayor to enter into, you know, this agreement with WEDA.
Right, I did, I actually did not anticipate that this, when I had one in front of me, it would, it would end up being signed, I, I did, I did anticipate some sort of agreement, and, and, and if it needs to come in the form of just a retainer letter, uh, that would be usable in my book.
Yeah, just put something like that together and. Better take it up, uh, next meeting.
Any other, any other questions from the board regarding, uh, the totality of the effort here?
Uh, no, no, but thank you, Matt.
I need to do that.
No, I think this is, uh, significant, Matt, and, um, you know, it's, uh, in order to really capitalize on that campus, uh, I think this would really, uh, lend itself to opening it up to private, you know, investment, uh, breaking it up and, and making use of it, so. You're just sitting there, that's for sure.
I agree. Hey, perfect, um, so I, Heather, what do I, do I, do you just take it back for me, or do I, uh, what happens here?
Heather.
What?
We lost Heather, oh no!
Molly's in here, Luther, I'm just trying to figure out.
I'm here.
Cancel.
Sorry.
So you should, you should have control of the, the screen now, correct, honey?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oops, I just needed you.
Matt, you wanna, you wanna get together? Uh, I don't know when you're available, but, um, I can at least show you what, uh, I have in terms of the letters from the committee.
Yes, um, I could be available,
Well, after the next,
Early next week, can we, can we do it? You know, um, just do it Monday or Tuesday next week.
Good. Uh, Tuesday, probably, like, Tuesday?
Yes, sir, Tuesday it is.
Right. I'll be in touch.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.